2020. Um, excuse me. 2020, I'm sorry. Council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. If you will, please stand with me for the prayer and pledge. All wise and knowing Father, as I pray tonight, I want to first and foremost say thank you for your enduring love to your people. As leaders, you've entrusted us with an awesome task upon each of us, and because of that, I ask you to guide us as we make important decisions to lead your people. Now, it is the time for us to not be faint in spirit, nor to get weary in our well-doing, but it's time for us to lead with passion and tenacity. It's my prayer that you would heal the sick, comfort the bereaved, reform the incarcerated, cover all our children, and help us to obey the laws of the land during these unprecedented times. Father, continue to bless our health heroes, our leaders, and our community. Touch every leader from the national level down to the local level with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. This is my prayer. In your Son Jesus' name, in every heart say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you all have received a copy of the June 23, 2020 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes? So move. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right, the minutes are adopted as official. We have one public hearing tonight to consider ordinance O-2005-02 to allow a special use in the group resident overlay at 200 North Columbia Street. The procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the Land Development Code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from the Planning and Zoning Director, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues previously raised. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record, and that you keep your comments as concise and relevant as possible. Has the public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millagiville, Georgia. Ordinance granting a special use for sorority with 15 residences at 200 North Columbia Street.
At this time, I recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Mayor of Graham.
Yes, ma'am. This property is currently the Annabellum Inn, and it is within the overlay that was presented in order to allow the special use by right, and they are requesting a special use for 15 residents for, it's going to be a sorority. And it did pass with a three to two vote before planning and zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Mayor, council, my name is Ian McMullin. I'm an attorney here in town at Waddell &amp; Associates. I live here in town at 130 Lakeside Drive. If you will indulge me, I have a few props I think might give you all some help. I don't know what the easiest way to do this, if you all want to take one and pass, maybe.
There's three different.
Gotcha.
Actually, I have a big prop. I'm not used to having all these props.
Did you have enough? I have one extra.
Yeah, there should be 20.
Okay. Okay.
use request for the property located at 200 North Columbia Street, which you all currently know as the Annabellum Inn. It was built in 1890. It's at the corner of Columbia and West McIntosh Street and has operated as a commercial bed and breakfast for at least 20 years that I'm aware of, because I know it was that when I was in high school. Currently, the property is zoned as SFR1, and it is in the group residence overlay that the council has designated as the area in which these special, these group houses are intended to be located. And we are applying for a special use permit to allow 15 young women to reside in the house. The special use request was approved by Planning and Zoning on their June 1, 2020 meeting, and the application to remove buildings and trees was approved by Historic Preservation Commission on June 11 of 2020. I represent, of course, the Zeta Tau Alpha Housing Corporation, who is the buyer that has this property under contract with the current owners. The Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority has occupied the property across the street, that was in the house directly across the street at 201 North Columbia Street since 2005. If the request is granted by city council, the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority plans to move directly across the street. One question that came up at Planning and Zoning was, are they going to have two houses? No, there won't be two houses. They're going to, right now, they rent, they would like to buy with your blessing and move across the street. Let's see. And one might ask the question, why do they want to buy a house rather than rent? Well, it's somewhat obvious that, you know, it's, as the old saying goes, it's better to own than rent. But a few maybe more subtle reasons for that would be that they can keep their property in pristine condition as a owner of the property, as opposed to having to go to a landlord and say, we want X, Y, and Z done. If they want X, Y, and Z done so that they can have the best-looking house in town at the college, they can do it themselves, and they can allocate that money the way they feel suited to do. And also, I think the major reason you want to own rather than rent is because you save money, and you can take the money that you were paying to a landlord and reinvest it into the organization and the community at large. The Zeta Tau Alpha Fraternity, just for some background, was, is one of the, it's called a fraternity, but it's what we call colloquially a sorority. It's women. It was started in Farmville, Virginia in 1898. The chapter here has approximately 180 young women, who are all Georgia College students. They came to campus while I was actually at Georgia College in 2004, and has become one of the most vibrant sororities on campus. There are many, many women in the community, including my wife and others you see here tonight, who are members and alumni of the Zeta Tau Alpha Sorority. I personally know of many current and alumni members of the sorority who are highly invested in the community. You have girls that work at Lockley Arboretum, where I'm on the board. We have, at First Methodist Church, many of the nursery workers and stuff for Zetas. So it was kind of great, because Ruth knew them all, and she said, well, if we take our kids in, and she knew them all from the sorority. The Housing Corporation is a separate entity than the sorority itself, and the Housing Corporation is the entity that's actually purchasing or under contract to purchase the property. And I think it's important for you as council to understand a little bit about who you're going to be dealing with, who's going to be the member of this community here. The Zeta Tau Alpha Housing Corporation was started in 1977 and is the oldest and largest property manager in the national fraternity and sorority community. They sort of set the standard. They have, they own 113 facilities across the United States. They have a net worth of $34 million, and they spend between $5 and $10 million annual in upgrades and maintenance to all their facilities. It's a highly organized and efficient entity. They have a zero tolerance policy on alcohol, and social functions in their houses and properties are limited to chapter members only. At a more basic level, the Housing Corporation's philosophy is they want their house, the Zeta House, to be the best-looking house on campus. And you say, well, why do they want it to be the best-looking house on campus, aside from the fact that it's just pretty? The reason is because they want to attract the highest-quality women to their sorority, and so they have an incentive to keep, to make sure that their house in any campus is one of the most pristine houses on campus. That sort of the, I think one of the biggest compliance issues you all are probably worried about, and the residents of the community are worried about, is going to be parking. And I think we have a pretty good way to address that. If you will look at this handout that I've sort of numbered, one, two, three, the first plat is the plat that J.E. Smith here in town did, showing the as-built survey of what's actually there. You see, there's an existing concrete parking pad and a pool. Right now, you could probably put about five off-street cars on the, in the property. I think they have either two or three on-street spaces that are dedicated to them along McIntosh Street. If you'll flip over to page two, you'll see the proposal that's been planned, that J.E. has gone out and engineered. And what you see is you see 15 parking spaces. They'll essentially remove the pool and put 15 individual parking spaces, one for each girl that's going to live there, and we are not asking for any continued use of on-street parking on McIntosh Street. So, you know, what you, what you see is that we're adding parking downtown to cover everyone that's there. I think it's sort of important to note that right now, the Annabellum Inn probably has, you know, at best, five off-street parking and three on-street parking, and as many of you have probably found out, if you've gone through that area when Annabellum Inn was having a wedding or a function or something else, parking's everywhere. We're going to essentially alleviate that by taking all the parking off-street. I think it's also important to point out that directly across the street where the sorority currently is, it appears there are about eight off-street parking places and either two or three on-street parking places. So again, we're adding parking downtown is what's going on here. The existing pool and frame storage building, if you, if you look back on, if you flip over to the next page, you'll see the illustrative site plan, and I've actually given you a much bigger artistic rendering that'll show what it's going to look like after the completions are done. If council approves, we're going to take out the pool. There's going to, there's one little building, which you can see at the very back of your handout. It's just essentially a poolhouse, a storage shed type thing. That will be removed. And then you can see the plannings that are proposed on page four, that I've marked four. If you're, if you're a horticultural expert, you could look in there and see, well, there's going to be a tea olive here, and this holly there, and et cetera, et cetera. So the bottom line is, it will look nice. And ladies and gentlemen, that is essentially what, you know, what I have for you to see. On a personal note, I can say that, you know, I'm married to a Zeta, and so I guess I'm sort of in through marriage, so to speak. And the interesting thing is how many other people in the community, it's sort of that old tradition in Bowlin County of the local boys marrying their girls, and so there's tons of us that have married Zeta girls and that are populating the community right now. And what I can say from that is, it's really neat to watch them, their networking, you know, what they do in, both with Zeta and through the community. This is a good group for us to support and have here in Millagiville, and I would encourage you all to, you know, add your support to this very worthy organization so that they can stop renting, own their own place, control their own destiny, and be a good member and good steward of our community. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that you all will have the pool removed for parking?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes, the pool will be removed.
That speaks volumes.
Yeah. Not only from a liability issue with the pool and, you know, college students, but just from pure parking issue with the pool, the pool will need to go. And we've had an engineer and a general contractor look at that, and, you know, they have a plan for how to do that correctly, so.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Okay, you can take the podium, Mr. Trump. And so let me say this, you have your allotted time, and if I start to see you kind of saying the same thing over and over again, I'm going to kind of ask you all to bring it in for me, okay? We don't need to be redundant in what we're saying tonight.
Hold on, I'll drop so you can hear me better, and I promise to stay away from Jimmy Jordan. My name is John Alton. I live at 221 South Liberty Street. The question is not whether this is a good sorority, because it is. It has helped the community, it has helped the college, so that's out of the question. There are several other questions. The main one is the parking. Remember that there are families who still live in that area with small children. And with 15 across the street and 15 more, you really exacerbated the parking problem at McIntosh and North Columbia. And I think the consideration for the council could be to reduce the number from 15 down to a reasonable number in one of these old homes. It is difficult for the homes in the historic district. All would, there's always the fear of overburdening the electrical system, of fire, of all those other things that go along with having a lot of people in one place, and that is a concern to many of the neighbors who are relatively close. Again, parking becomes a significant problem. I've looked at the diagram, and I still have a hard time figuring out 15 spaces, but then again, I'm not an engineer. That may be the case. But that's 15 cars at that location. Right across the street in the hall house, which they currently occupy, there were 10 allocated spaces in the back for that sorority. They use the 10, plus the street, some with or without permits, but they do occupy the street. During this session, that is a very bad intersection. It is a very bad street for crossing, for students, for children, for anyone else. And when you complicate it by the hall house, it's going to be leased again. It's authorized a sorority, I have no doubt, it's going to be leased again with as many as 15 people. 15 cars, 15 cars, that's 30 cars in one intersection with families. Reduction down to a reasonable number for occupation of that house, I think it's an eight-bedroom house. I think it would be a consideration for some of the neighbors who have small children, who do live there, who do traverse that street back and forth every day. At least, that's one of my considerations. The parking, I think, is the biggest problem. I've had difficulty with parts of McIntosh Street, anyway. There are two signs there for resident parking. They're not authorized in the first place. I'm hoping that they'll be removed so that they, since they're not in the ordinance, they shouldn't be there. And that, again, opens up places for people to park, but not 15 more places in the backyard. I think overall, speaking from a historic district standpoint, we have taken enough backyards, side yards, and concreted them in for parking, so that we are just about now out of backyard space, green space, trees, lawns. And it's time we need to take a look at that also, as we're considering what we can do with this ordinance. And I'll put my mask back on and sit down, and hopefully, you will consider the parking situation and the neighbors who, in fact, do have small children, who do stay there, who do try and be good neighbors, and do appreciate the council taking into consideration their lifestyle also. Entertain any questions?
Colonel Alton, you do serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, is that correct?
I do.
And you are aware that the council has the right to be able to rescind a group housing overlay for a property once vacant?
Yes.
If it changes hands?
Yes.
So then where are we getting this concern about potentially 30 different cars parked across the street from each other? 15 in one location, 15 in another, if we have the authority to rescind the group housing overlay? That effectively means it would only be the same group just across the street where they will have appropriate parking available?
They do have appropriate parking available where they are now, almost. There are 15 members supposedly. I'm assuming it's 15 members, that's what they want to put in the, in a bed and breakfast. So they have 10 authorized spaces behind the hall house, where the others will go, I don't know. But rescinding that is up to the council.
That is an option that we have.
That is an option you have?
Mm-hmm.
And I would suggest that you look at some of those options for reducing the parking and reducing the number of people who go into some of these older homes, and I think that was my main point.
Colonel Alton, what is it that you have in your backyard? Is that of any concern to anyone here in the P&amp;Z?
I doubt it, seriously. I have...
You're concerned, then, what these individuals do with their property and their backyard?
I'm concerned with what they do in their backyards. I have green space, I have trees, I have bushes.
That's your prerogative, sir, is it not?
It is. And it's also their prerogative, but they got to come through you. You take in consideration, when you authorize a sorority or a change in the structure, you have the authority to dictate what happens in backyards.
We have the authority to decide whether or not it is appropriate, based on the plan that they bring to us, but what they actually do with their backyard is what, is their own prerogative. That's their property, and they may do with it as they wish. We have no more right to tell them what they do with theirs than we have to tell you to do with yours.
Oh, yes you do.
If you wanted to put a rock garden in your backyard, sir...
Oh, yes you do.
If you wanted to put a back...
You have to go before the planning is on.
We can't hear but one of y'all at a time, okay? Let him come finish what he's trying to say.
If you wanted to put in a rock garden as opposed to greenery, we would have no more right to tell you that you couldn't.
If I want to cut down trees and pave my backyard, I got to go before one of your institutions to okay that.
Yes, sir.
So you do have some authority to dictate what happens in the backyard.
There's a reason why we have a tree ordinance, and that is to make sure that people are not indiscriminately cutting trees that do not have license and bonded authority to do so. But, well, what I'm referring to here is, if you wanted to put in a rock garden and gravel over your whole backyard, that would be your right.
No, it's your right. It's yours in the code office to tell me, well, I can do that. You can't go and change the landscape without going through Historic Preservation. Major changes in landscape, Historic Preservation. So there is some authority, which you have, that I don't control my backyard, because I live in the district, and there are certain rules in the district that don't apply elsewhere in the city.
But again, it's up to us to decide whether or not a plan presented is appropriate.
Correct. And I'm here to say, yes, you look otherwise, otherwise, at other things other than just the plan. That's all my suggestion is.
And the Planning and Zoning did approve this?
Three to two vote.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Is there a rebuttal from the applicant?
Very short one. Across the street, currently, there are 13 residents, not 15, and again, I just want to reiterate, we're taking all of the parking off-street. If anyone's ever been to any function at the Annabellum Inn, you know that you don't get all the people at their parking, so what you have is people parked all along the streets. We're essentially alleviating that just about completely. There was a concern about what the, what was going to go in, you know, taking green space and turning it into concrete. Well, if you will look at the site plan, you know, you can look at the nice colorized version, or the J.E. Smith's overlay, what you will see is that we're really not adding very much concrete. What we're taking is an existing concrete parking pad, an existing concrete swimming pool, and adding a little bit of concrete, but, you know, just guesstimating, 75% or more is already concrete. So we're just changing the nature of that concrete. And again, this is in the overlay. This is in the section of town where we have designated, you as a city council have designated for group housing. You know, we're not, we're not going on Liberty Street. We're not going, and quite frankly, Planning, Zoning, and Council are allowing, or have allowed historically, these group houses in areas that aren't the overlay. And the argument then was, is it should be in the overlay. Well, we're bringing it to you to put in the overlay, and now we're getting the argument, well, we can't say it's not an overlay, but now we're going to say parking, you know? And so I absolutely respect those who live in the community and have small children, but no, you know, as Colonel Alton said, the sorority has not caused any problems. No one can point to any problems that the sorority has caused. You know, quite frankly, I would rather have a well-regulated sorority house next to me than, you know, the likely alternative, which would be someone else buying it and trying to, you know, pigeonhole it, and God only knows what. The, one other thing, well, I'm sorry, I've lost my, one thought came in and drove the other one out, so I'm not sure where I was going with that. Again, I think the bottom line here is that we've addressed the fire and safety issues, we've addressed the historic preservation issues, we've addressed the parking issues, we're adding parking to this area that doesn't currently exist, and the cost of that is, you know, a slight increase in concrete in the backyard. I think that the Zeta Tau Alpha Housing Corporation has done, gone above and beyond, you can tell from the nature of the work we've done with J.E. Smith, with engineering, with the landscape architect, with the plant, you know, it's going to look nice, it's going to be a good group, and to be honest, it sounds to me, I think, I think we need to be careful that we don't penalize one group. one group. You know, this is not a group that's ever come before council before and asked for anything. So the first, you know, what I sort of perceive here is that we're having issues with other more habitual people that come in and ask for this, and now we're going to try and draw a line, so, you know, no more. And I think it would be very unfair if council draws this line against, on a group that's only ever asked one thing. And I hope that you all will consider that.
Any questions? I do.
Is there a rebuttal from the opposition?
Hi, my name's Natalie King, and I live at 120 North Columbia. And I've sent an email with a document today that I'm just going to read aloud to each of you, but you can refer to it in your emails. I'm a resident located a few houses south of the proposed parking lot being discussed today. I will outline the repercussions of voting yes if you approve this home for a sorority. I will speak to the following: preservation of the neighborhood, traffic, parking, and safety, demise of single-family homes, governing and enforcement inconsistency, the mythos of a college town, and the perpetuation of SES and quality. In terms of preservation of the neighborhood, the preservation of this house should be considered within context of the rest of the neighborhood, which currently contains little to no parking lots of the size suggested. In fact, the parking lot is comparable to the square footage of the home, which is excessive. While the parking lot may not seem, may seem to solve the problems created by adding more residences on the street, it's not as simple as that, particularly when taken into account the design of entrance and exit patterns on an already highly trafficked intersection, which is most days allotted as orange or red in terms of trafficking, and includes a one-way. This brings me to my next point: traffic, parking, and safety concerns. Currently, there are a number of traffic backups with little room for logical exits and entrances on McIntosh, a one-way, and Columbia from residences with four or more unrelated driving occupants. The decision to create yet another source of tenant housing at maximum capacity versus an inn which did not maintain maximum capacity will only compound these issues, creating safety concerns for pedestrians and other drivers. At present, the existing structure of the Annabellum Inn barely meets the internal requirements for the new tenants proposed. In addition, as pointed out in the previous zoning and commission board meeting by the board itself, the inn has violated the parking requirements for many years. Owners in the past have placed illegal signs for guest parking, contributing to overcrowding and illegal parking on the street. These signs are still there. This greatly impacted residents from using available parking that they pay for yearly. In particular, as a residence, the business left notes on our vehicles to move them from their guests, to move them from their guest spots in these areas, yet our vehicles were labeled with an up-to-date residential parking permit. The current group seeking to purchase the home has proven to be no less difficult. This group being discussed today has broken parking laws, not to mention noise ordinances in their previous residence across the street. Moreover, they have broken zoning laws about the number of residents allowed in a home, as again noted in the last zoning and planning and commission meeting by the board itself. So now we will have the same group, the same problems, but in a different home. The demise of single-family homes. Landlords are being given permission to house unrelated occupants above the accepted legal number. For example, this was done for the landlord across the street from the inn, which they used to occupy. Now these same tenants are seeking to purchase the residence we are addressing to expand parking for today. When we do reach our maximum, when do we reach our maximum capacity? We will now have an extra 30 residents, which my neighbor brought up, on a very small block meant to support homes with three to five residents at most. Many of the homes in this neighborhood are single-family homes in a single-family district, yet this is changing due to the unilateral decisions made by specific boards and commissions such as yourself. These decisions often viewed as small, harmless, one-time allowances amalgamate into one large problem: the demise of affordable single-family homes in our community. The neighborhood has ceased to be residential and has become commercial, whether the law recognizes this distinction or not, primarily because of decisions made by Millageville boards. An elite few are given special permission to break the law and circumvent ordinances in hopes of building income properties for themselves. This inflates property values in a very short amount of time, outpacing overall salary inflation, preventing future single families from ever purchasing the properties again. As a result, these neighborhoods are forever changed, and not always for the better. Green spaces have become parking lots, littered with trash-bag tents to conceal parties. Dozens of red solo cups, broken alcohol bottles, condoms, clothing, lost hair extensions, and beer pong tables make up our neighborhood. Front porches are locations for bands or movie screens that play loudly at all hours of the night and day. In fact, whom we're discussing today often has parties, but they're not labeled as parties because we don't see them drinking. Disabled citizens find themselves pursuing circuitous routes as a result of numerous parking violations, and we witnessed this just yesterday. Bushes become the next best urinal or place to vomit. Front yards become a place for sexual intercourse. A few weeks ago, I came home to my neighbors in bikinis holding up a honk and we will drink sign, making it difficult to put my toddler to sleep with the constant honking. Does this sound like someone you want to live next to? Does this sound like a neighborhood you want to raise a family in? My neighbors and I, who are raising families in our homes, find little consistency in the decisions of boards and commissions when it comes to governing the preservation and zoning of our residential neighborhoods. And that brings me to my point of governing inconsistency and lack of law enforcement. Law enforcement is often unresponsive or unable to provide effective solutions in dealing with issues. We met with an officer this week as a neighborhood to discuss our concerns one evening in our neighbor's home. He explained that he cannot assist us, even though parking, noise, and zoning laws are routinely broken by landlords and tenants in our community. He also understood that his own department has not been documenting complaints about these violations, making the burden of proof on our community. He explained he is both understaffed and overwhelmed by the crimes committed elsewhere in the community, leaving us to manage the situation ourselves. He also agreed that this council continues to make his job harder by approving these homes to be rezoned without fault of consequences in regards to underage drinking, parking violations, noise disturbances, litter, and increasing concerns for traffic safety. This leaves me and my communities to bear the responsibility, which means my neighbors, particularly those in the Greek system, often retaliate with property damage, theft, and even threats to those who complain. Examples include theft of our statues, flags. I personally did not enjoy cleaning up human defecation on my driveway. We have been asked by the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide proof, and even when we do, whether it's pictures, videos, or police reports, it's still not enough. And what I want to know is, when is it enough? And my last and final point is something that we've heard a lot: the mythos of a college town and the perpetuation of inequality. The neighborhood has slowly been reorganized to suit the needs of community members, whom will only be present for four to five years, rather than represent the voices you took 10 minutes. Rather than represent the voices of those who raised their children in these homes for a lifetime. If you vote yes, you will be catering to those temporal needs and not to the long-term needs of this community. In fact, landlords, construction companies, student renters, and most of those whom profit from these decisions are not actually residents of Millageville, nor do they live full-time in the city. Our economy as a town is not necessarily improved by catering to their desires. More importantly, the mythos that this is a college town greatly impacts politics within our community, and not for the better. This perception contributes to SES and racial inequality. To beholden and cater to institutions that do not deserve the whole of our community is not in our best interest, particularly when all colleges in the nation will see a significant drop in over the next decade, which will be crucial for the decisions that you're making today. This is not a college neighborhood. We need to understand this is not a college town. We are a town with colleges in it. These institutions most certainly do not serve the complete demographic of Millageville, but rather a very specific population, a very white population, whom are primarily transient with temporal durations as residents, whether employed or enrolled by these institutions. I guess what I'm asking is, do you think that we are a college town, and should we be beholden to people who don't live here permanently, who are only here for four years? Do we need to keep creating special allowances for them? Please consider the full ramifications of your choices today. This letter, or this moment, does not discuss the issues of overcrowding a neighborhood, particularly in regards to our current climate of COVID. It does not discuss the water quality or pressure issues that we have had every time we compound and overcrowd this neighborhood. And it doesn't discuss the fact that we stop receiving services like garbage pickup because it's believed that no one else lives there but college students during the year. This council, other commissions, and boards, along with law enforcement, have already proven that it cannot sustain the increasing numbers and therefore increasing violations as the community currently exists. So I ask you today, why add to it? If we can't prevent the violations happening today, then why add to it? At some point, this council has to say no to overcrowding. At some point, we have to draw a line. Thank you.
Did you want to wait and see Ms. King if council had any questions they want to ask of you? Counsel, do you have any questions that you would like to ask of Ms. King?
Ms. King, one of the things that you stated in here was about the problems that you've been having, and I was listening to you and reading along with you about some of the things. A lot of these things, and I do honestly have to tell you that this is my first time hearing some of them. Now, you know, I've heard about problems in other areas and everything, but, you know, this is my first time hearing about so many, and I really do wish that you had, or you had been more diligent about getting information like this to us. You know, that's all, there's really not a question. It's just, you know, I'm just being honest with you when I say that, and I'm sure it is aggravating what you're going through.
Thank you.
You read in page two, inconsistency and lack of law. You said you met with an officer yesterday?
Yeah, that was another thing I was going to ask you about.
Yes, a group of my neighbors and I met and spoke with an officer.
I have a note here to ask her who that officer was. I'm going to do that as a sidebar.
Yeah, I prefer not to out someone who's so very honest with us.
Right.
That's not really fair.
Okay. Right. I will say this for you and your neighbors, anytime, though, that you meet with an officer. And, you know, please follow up with him to make sure that he pass that on to his superiors because we can't, you know, we, here again, Mr. Griffiths, if you're just hearing that, then there's nothing that we can do to solve a problem if it hasn't been addressed or brought to our attention as being a problem. Because I would hate to think that any representative of the city would meet with a group of taxpayers, a group of citizens, and say that there's absolutely nothing that we could do.
I don't think he said there was nothing that he could do. I think he said there's such a pull in another direction based on what else is happening in our community. You know, if someone's getting shot across town, calling about a noise violation, you know, at midnight, those are difficult things to respond to.
Yeah, they're difficult things to balance, but we do have to find a balance so there's no excuse.
Right.
I mean, what you're concerned are not any less than those, yeah, of course, that's a big event.
Right.
But that doesn't minimize your concerns at all.
I appreciate you saying that.
It shouldn't.
I appreciate that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Lee or Mr. Chambers, do you all have any questions?
No, I don't have any. May I ask an answer?
Is there anyone else that wants to present?
I have a rebuttal.
I'll give it. Go ahead, go ahead, please.
Mayor, counsel, I'll keep this brief. As much as I sympathize with, you know, someone trying to raise a family in a college neighborhood, the reality is, is that the college students are here. They're not going away. We're talking about moving them across the street, and they're already here. I think it would be very unfair to disallow this worthy organization their right to purchase and control their own destiny rather than continue to pay rent on houses that have already been granted special use applications within the overlay, simply because someone has a "not in my backyard" take on this. If council would like, some of the questions, or at least the insinuations that the Zetas were, you know, defecating in someone's driveway or urinating in the bushes, I have the general advisor that's been the advisor for how many years? Five years here with us. If y'all would like to hear from her on some of these, if not outright allegations, certainly insinuations about the character of the Zetas.
Counsel, did you all want to hear anything?
No, but I do have a question, or a point that I would like for you to clarify because I keep, I keep hearing people say that we're increasing the number of people there, but you did say that they are moving from this location, where there's 13, across the street, and there's going to be 15, and they're going to vacate the prior location, right?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just, you know, I keep hearing it's increasing to 30, and I just wanted to get that clarified while you're here.
That's correct. So we're moving across the street, and we're providing parking for all the residents, which we currently do not have. One other thing to keep in mind, just to reiterate, we're not asking for any on-street parking. We have engineered such that we have all of our parking on the property. There are currently signs that say resident parking only. The Zeta Tau Alpha Housing Corporation would have absolutely no problem with council, the city, removing those signs, so open those signs up to whomever. Any other questions? Thank you.
I don't think I've ever taken the opportunity to say something before a vote in no wise impact.
I will be great because all my points have been pretty much covered. My name is Lynn Knapp, and I live at 517 West Hancock Street. Some background, and you're not going to believe this, but the college did not bring our family to Millageville. I kind of found out it was a college town by accident, or the hard way, which was my fault because that's not what I was looking for. I was looking for a place to raise my family, to plant some roots, and to have a great quality of life. It has been a huge disappointment. I'm thoroughly disappointed in, okay, let me back up, background, historicproperties.com. Historicproperties.com is why we're here in Millageville. We came here because of our historic home, the small-town feel. So I'm thoroughly disappointed in some of the council members' voting records when it comes to these historic properties. It's always, always in favor of the landlords rather than your own citizens, not to mention the obvious, which is going against your own ordinances that were passed by the city council. The property being voted on is essentially a football field away from where we live with our three children, three of our four children. We share the block with the Cruz family, with their young daughter, the Quiet Pilot lives next door, and until recently, Ms. Sarah Flake, she just passed away, she was my friend. Back in 2008, the whole neighborhood was normal people, run-of-the-mill, standard neighbors, okay? So now, 12 years later, this month, I share my block with Kappa Sigma, Kappa Alpha, the Zetas, Phi Mu, a whole slew of other housefuls of people, okay? Most of them are living with more than three unrelated and have not come before you to ask permission. So I noticed also last week Theta Chi has a bunch of flags up from behind the Annabellum Inn to Jackson, and then all... to Jackson, and then all the way to Montgomery. The whole half of the block is now Theta Chi. So I wanna applaud the Zetas, really. I appreciate that they are getting their own place. That is a worthy financial move that I would even make. I'd rather rent or buy than rent any day. It's nothing personal. However, that is a lot of people in one house. That's gonna be a lot of people in two houses, and the reason for the, for that we keep saying increasing is because the house of, across the street that has 13 or 15, who knows in there right now, they're moving across the street to a place that had basically no residents. Now that 13 to 15 people residence is going to be empty and will probably be filled with 13 or 15 or whoever many people they can squeeze in there. That's a lot of people on one house, it's a lot of people in one block, it's a lot of people in my neighborhood, and I already told you that I'm a football field away from this house, okay? It's not Bobby Dodd Stadium football field, but more like Davenport Field, but it sometimes feels like I'm at a large venue in my neighborhood. It's ridiculous. This is my neighborhood, okay? P&amp;Z approved the planning and zoning. My question is, how many of those yes votes live in my neighborhood too? Or downtown? How many of those yes votes live downtown? How many of those yes votes live within a mile of that property, or two miles? The HBC approved it. How many of those yes votes live in my neighborhood? How many of those yes votes live downtown? How many of those yes votes live within a mile or so of that property? Okay? Your council member's gonna vote on this property. I know, probably got your minds made up already, that's fine. How many of you live in my neighborhood? How many of you live downtown? How many of you live within a couple of miles of this house? Okay, good. So it's a lot easier when it's not in your backyard. How do you, how many of you see me walking my dog around this property? How many of you deal with the noise at all hours of the night? Or trash, trespassing, okay? In my front yard, my side yard, my backyard, how many of you are there? Neither the seller nor the buyer of this property are citizens of Milledgeville that I know of. There's a strong possibility that the majority of the tenants will not be citizens of Milledgeville. We're not here talking about this because of citizens of Milledgeville. This property is not being rezoned for Milledgeville citizens. And most likely, the people that are gonna be living in the house are not citizens of Milledgeville. We are your citizens. Who, who are you working for? Who do you represent? Y'all have any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Ms. Knapp.
I don't have a question, it's something that I would like to say. You all hear me?
Yes, we do.
This one mean?
She just wanna give a comment.
We hear you, Dr. Lee.
Okay, first of all, I'm understanding there are 13 sorority students who wants to move across the street, right? Which would be 15, the same students. The same people in one, in the house just gonna move across the street, right? All right, we have had problems in the past and have been told over and over and over again that big homes are not gonna sell. Well, now we have a sorority. I'm a part of a sorority. We are family. It's, I don't see a sorority as being residents, it's just a big family. I'm very familiar with this organization. It is a good organization. I see that we have an opportunity to have someone to come in to take care of a home that is in very good shape, not to have it fall down because no one wants to buy it. I do understand about noise, because I'm having to deal with it now. I do understand, but, you know, there comes a time, and as I look at every angle that it is, you know, this sorority is willing to take up a pool for parking, which we have a serious problem with parking, they have gone way and beyond, that I feel, and this is just me speaking, way and beyond trying to make things right. Really, I'm just really lost for words, because I just feel as though this is a good thing. And that's just me. You, and my council members will tell you all, usually, I say no, you know, there's a problem. But again, I have gone through this, I have listened, and I have listened, and I just wanna do the right thing. That's all I have to say.
All right, we've heard from the applicant, and we've heard from those in opposition of...
Is there something?
You got one more?
Two minutes.
I can't deny you the opportunity.
All right, so Mike Cruz, I live two blocks from this house. Argument for, they're good people, and it's good for money, okay? Okay, they're good people, cool. Okay, money, there's no more money coming from them, they already live here. They live here, okay? The money is going to the organization, that's not in the state, we talked about that. So again, it's not a money factor, we're not getting anything there. We have made it clear that there's currently a problem with parking and people putting too many people in the houses. It's there. We're making it clear that it's not enforced. At times, it can't be enforced. Already, we're gonna exasperate that problem, okay? There's 15 people in the current house, they're moving, cool. There's gonna be 15 more back in that house that they're moving from. Ms. Flake has passed, that's gonna have five people in that house. We're gonna have an intersection that already has a problem with the house of 15 and the house next to it, which maybe has three or four, and we're gonna have 40 people there. They say they're gonna have 15 people, 15 cars, cool, all right. They sit at the planning and zoning, and they're gonna have regular functions now. That's another 10 people, where are they parking? It is a problem now, already. It's, can't be, it hasn't been, I don't know, enforced. We're gonna make this exponentially worse. So my, I guess, monetary or, you know, emotional appeal is that we've had people die, people get hit on these streets in the last two years. So if my daughter or myself, my wife, is crossing the street because there's a car illegally parked that has not been moved, that has not been fined, that has not been ticketed because it can't, and it's only gonna get worse, that's gonna be on this. I mean, right now, we could say no. If we change that, I mean, it's on this, it really is. Questions?
Attorney Jordan, what is the process for revoking the current group housing overlay for the previous house, the house that they would no longer be occupying?
Well, my understanding of the way our owners are correct, that as long as it is not changed, and it is re-inspected and complies with all the provisions, council would have to have, just like with any other portion of the ordinance, would have to have just cause in order to revoke a special exception, given to that particular owner, now the ownership changes hands, a special exception as well.
And within the range of just cause, would public safety be something that we could broadly interpret to?
That's a possibility, but we would definitely have to explore that, whatever the basis for that cause, we definitely have to be, you know, follow out, and if it was property owner who has a special exception, my understanding is, we have not had any issues with that particular property as it was currently occupied, so it would, it's possible, but it would depend on the facts.
Thank you.
Can I just say again, that's a maybe, obviously, from he said. I mean, we've had maybes getting more parking downtown for, I mean, we've lived here for about six or seven years, and, I mean, that hasn't changed, so things tend to move a little slowly, so to make a change would probably not happen anytime soon. Anything else?
Thank you. I saw one more person, Mr. Jordan, but...
Good evening, I'm Richard Knapp, I live at 517 West Hancock Street, at football field length, so it is a stadium at times. I'm not gonna reiterate everything, but if the example's already given, at 201 North Columbia Street, it was zoned specifically for a certain number of people, they already violated that. And it said in the last Planning and Zoning Commission that they had 15 people in that house. It was originally approved for 12. They have 10 parking spots there. Even though they had 10 parking spots on the premise, they parked on the street. A majority of time, most of the residents parked on the street, it's convenient, okay? This is proven fact. I mean, if the, if the parking lot in the back has one or two vehicles, that's not 10, okay? If the parking on the adjacent street, Macintosh, and on Columbia Street have parking all the way to the intersection, blocking the intersection, this has happened to me, I walk my dog every night, okay? So I can see every single day what goes on. Right now is not the time, it's indicative of what's going on because college is out of session. But once college starts up, please take a walk downtown, you know? Just don't assume that they did not have that many people. They, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, they said they had 15 residents. Okay, they didn't have, he changed his number numerous times, got it, but they had more than 12. So that's already a violation. So they violated, they had off-street parking, they parked on the street. They violated the 12 people residence on the inside, they had more, whether it's 13, 14, or 15, doesn't matter, it was more than 12. Now you're getting ready to approve 15 residents across the street in the Antebellaman. I don't, I don't see dimensions on this thing, I didn't see any markings, how many feet, how wide the parking lots are. It could be Mini Coopers, it could be Smart Cars, it could be Golf Carts, I don't know, I can't see that, okay? I do have an engineering background. It's gonna be cramped. And for convenience sake, again, guests, nobody ever includes guests, there's always seems to be a lot of guests out there, they're always gonna park on the street. So that's never considered, okay? So we have a lot of issues. So yes, it's gonna be difficult to change what happens at 201 North Columbia Street already, across the street from the Antebellaman. So there are gonna be, right now, if you approve this, there are gonna be 15 residents, there's gonna be 15 cars, there's gonna be X number of residents, whether it's 12 or whatever it is gonna be in the other house, that's at least 12 cars, that's not including guests. Across the street again, Ms. Sarah Flake unfortunately has died, okay? She definitely did not have any intention to ever convert her, her house into anything like, like what's gonna happen, okay? We just know that. Unfortunately, as residents die or move away, it's slowly, the demographics have changed completely, my wife has already spoken to that. You have got to consider the infrastructure, okay? And I guarantee you, if somebody moved right next to you, next to your house, with 15 on one side and 15 on the other side, it doesn't matter whether you live on the lake, downtown, or somewhere else. Those are houses. Those houses never were intended to, you know, have that capacity, unless it was a hotel or something else that I'm not aware of. It was a bed and breakfast, got it? It had a certain number of spaces already, now we're gonna double that. We're gonna put that capacity, we're gonna put even more people there. Yes, we're gonna park off-street, are we really? Where are the guests gonna park? And it's really gonna be a convenience thing, because when I look at that parking lot, I can tell you from my engineering background, it's gonna be tight. So guess where they're gonna park? It was tight over there across the street, it's probably gonna be tighter over here. And yes, that is not a backyard, it depends which street you're on, because if you're on Macintosh Street, that's a side yard, it's right there, it's highly visible. A concrete parking lot is highly visible. You take one look at the homestead, what happened to it? It looks like an apartment building. That was a beautiful historic town, I mean, house, in town, it was very beautiful. It looks like an apartment building from the back with concrete that you can't believe, it looks, I can't see anything historic about it. That is why I came to Milledgeville. The wife is correct. We bought it because of a historical house. That is not historic preservation, that is historic murder. Once you put a parking lot in, and I got a concrete pad that somebody put in my backyard before I purchased the house, I was looking at the consideration for removing it. Unfortunately, at some points, it's eight to 10 inches reinforced concrete. I can't even imagine what type of heavy equipment it's gonna take for me to remove that and the expense it's gonna take. It's just a huge concrete pad that's extremely hot. You think somebody is gonna ever turn that into a single-family residence with that 15 parking spaces? That is what you're gonna, this is permanent change, you know? That's the problem, and that's the thing that the city needs to look at. These are permanent changes to your community and to your demographics. There is ample housing. Maybe it's time that we took Georgia College up on their plan for the last three presidents of Georgia College to come up with a Greek row on West Campus. That's a solution. What I don't hear is solutions, because there's alternatives to placing 15 people. What is a more reasonable number? What is the city doing, what is the city looking at to make it a more reasonable number? Is it eight? Maybe they purchased two houses adjacent to each other, that way they could minimize the footprint. But changing literally an entire yard, yes, it's got a swimming pool already, the swimming pool doesn't look bad. It's hidden, but 15 cars on the back is gonna look rough, okay? Yeah, you can do a little bit of landscaping tricks on it, but yes, there are ordinances already out there, because I live in one of those things, and I had to get, I had to get approval to even put a fence that you really can't see from, from the front yard. The neighbor, Jason, to me, took out all the trees, probably illegally, didn't get a permit for it, and refilled it with about a foot and a half of gravel, okay? At times, I had 13, 15 vehicles in the back, I can tell you what it looks like. There's no way you can do it. It's just cars parked everywhere and cars have to move in and out in order to move one vehicle. So you gotta really consider what the residents are saying here. And let me tell you who the permanent residents are. Pull up Q Public Net, look at Homestead Exemption, that's how you find out who the residents are. I did, you probably need to take a look at it too. Take a look at the snapshot from 12, 15 years ago, and take a look at it now. You're currently not enforcing the current ordinances. Code enforcement is lacking the teeth, the enforcement, and the city council needs to do something about that too. You need to get on your code enforcement. I have complained multiple times, we have put in complaints to the Milledgeville Police Department, so we actually have documentation now, because we had originally called Georgia College Police, then we switched over to Milledgeville Police Department, so it has a blotter report. So that at least shows up on the report. But the problem is, those aren't guests over there. I got four years of documented evidence where there's been seven to eight vehicles parked in front. Please do not tell me there's only three residents living in the street, in the house across. Yes, this is a broader complaint, but it is indicative of what's going on. Precedents. You heard it, what, you just heard that, I've talked about precedents. I said, when you set a precedence, it's hard to get back, because then people come up here and quote precedents. Well, now you're gonna draw the line. All of a sudden, I've come up here, I got a thing, you're gonna draw the line. Well, what's the next person gonna do? Hey, you didn't draw the line over here, you set the precedence, why can't I have a strip club, a bar, or something down here? Those are real considerations. You already went over the line. It's time to move, it's time to cut it off, you know? These are serious issues. If you don't live there, you don't know the issue. Like I said, you know, we, the demographics have changed a lot, and partly because of what's happening. It's, there's workable solutions, that's the thing, the city council needs to look at other alternatives. Is there proper number eight, maybe? Is there proper number six? It really depends. I can tell you what, it's not 15, 15 cars to start off with. And then if the other property had 15 people and 15 cars... And then if the other property had 15 people and 15 cars, guess what? They're gonna quote that. They said, you allowed 15 here, they only had this much square footage. So when I sell my house, can I put 24 in there? Because I can precedence him. I can say, look, you guys approved that, I can put 24 in mine. That is what you really have to consider. And that's why I'm talking as a citizen to you, but as also a resident right around the corner from this stuff. We've complained. I got a .45 caliber round sitting in my roof. I don't know how it got there, but it's buried in my roof, and I know it got there in the last year. Don't know how it got in there, probably celebratory fire, but just the other day, on Saturday, on Montgomery Street, I guess, or somewhere in that vicinity, I was standing out talking to my neighbor Steve Stengel, owns the house next door, and we heard a running gun battle. It's the same thing we talked about. I found a 9mm in my front yard, a loaded one. Police took care of that. These are the issues, we're not making up stories. These are documented cases, we have video footage. I got 10 cameras. I see a lot. It's not by choice, it just happens. They're not pointing it specifically in all different types of directions to catch stuff, they literally protect my yard. I can see people coming up to it. So that's what we're talking about here. You know, I have nothing against the college students, I have nothing against the college, this is about people. The amount of people you squeeze, is it really safe to squeeze 15 people just because you can? I can squeeze a lot of people in my house, but that doesn't make it right, that doesn't make it safe. That doesn't allow my water pressure while I'm in the shower during the first couple days the college is back, to come out as a trickle. Those are real issues. The sewer pipe broke in my front of house a couple times at the beginning of college on Hancock Street, they fixed it once, as soon as they fixed it, it burst further up, then it burst again after they fixed that one. Three sewer, three line breaks, three main, water main breaks, right after each other in this, in a sequence of events. Guys, the infrastructure can't do it. You've said it yourself, the infrastructure needs to be renewed. Guess what? The streets are not for parking, they're for driving vehicles. You guys gotta stop this. You gotta make accommodations, you gotta look for parking, you guys gotta come up with solutions. I can come up with solutions, but somebody has to get smart on this, somebody in the city has to look at it and say, look, enough's enough, let's find out workable solutions. Maybe it is eight, like I said, maybe it's six, but 15 to me, does not pass the common sense test. And did you guys, did everybody take a look at it and did due diligence and walk through that house, walk through the plan, measure the parking lot, and see if you can really fit 15 cars in there? Because an architect, or somebody, or a general contractor said so, I can tell you, I work at GMC, and we have problems all the time. We thought we could do this, and then we have to realize that we have to take parking spaces out and make them wider, because they were insufficient. We do it all the time. So these are things, if somebody has not looked at it from an architectural standpoint or an engineering perspective, and made sure that the drainage, where's all the drainage gonna go from the concrete? Onto the street, okay? That surface drainage is gonna go somewhere, it's not being absorbed by whatever anymore. So these are things you really have to take a look at. It's a one-way street, that one-way street's not marked North Columbia, I talked about, the pedestrian crossings are not properly marked anymore. I've had people go down that one-way street, I see, every other night, I see a car going down the street the wrong way. The pedestrian markings are faded, that's all right there, at Macintosh and Columbia, North Columbia. Fix those issues first. But really, I think the city has to come down and make a, really a serious look at it, and see if this is feasible, and doesn't strain the infrastructure, and doesn't add to the parking issues already on hand. Because I can tell you, college isn't even in session, and they're starting to park already down the one-way. So, that's all I gotta say. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I got emotional, I didn't repeat any of my points here, because everybody already addressed them, but...
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How long you been living there as a resident?
I've been living, I retired five and a half years ago from the Army.
If I'm not clear on this, did you make a reference to the present home that was a magnificent home?
Which one? No, that was not me. Which, which one?
The home that they, they present in right now, today. The home, the place they, they located right now, right across the street. Did you make reference to that?
Yeah.
It was a perfect home?
Oh, across the street from me, yes.
Across the street from that?
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm talking about the neighborhood, right.
The house on the corner now where they presently in.
Right.
Did you make reference to that? That was a perfect home?
Yes, that was 201 North, North Columbia Street. I made reference the amount of people that are currently in there, which is the Zetas.
Right, I thought, I thought you said it was a perfect home, because I've been living here all my life, and my daughter, Ms. Hall, used to own that property.
I did make reference to that.
And my, and Ms. Hall was a piano teacher, my, my daughter took piano lessons there. The hall, that house was falling in until we passed it, owned it, for them to fix it up. It really was about to be demolished, demolished. That's what, that was the kind of shape that home was in, before we, before we did this ordinance on that home. But I, like I said, I made, I made sure, because my daughter was going to school, and she took piano lessons there. So you mean, so you gonna sit here and tell me today, that where you live at, you never had guests to visit your home, park on the street?
Sir, I've had guests, but I've had a reasonable amount. If you wanna go out there when they have...
I'm asking you, you have half guests to park on the street, haven't you?
No, I haven't actually parked in my driveway, sir.
You never parked on the street?
I haven't parked in my driveway, that's correct.
And how many have been? I mean, you gonna hold in your driveway?
I can probably hold about six to eight vehicles.
Alright.
Maybe more. But that doesn't mean I do. I'm very selective on my friends, but I appreciate it.
I do know that when you put a large number of people in, it does impact your area that you live in, because there was 500 college students put over in my area right off of Underwood Road, and it does make a huge difference.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. So at this time, I don't, I'm gonna close out presentations, Mr. Jordan. I think everybody said what they have to say in reference to this, and what I am gonna do is just go ahead and, and ask for members of council, you've heard the ordinance and the evidence presented, do I hear a motion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the request and proceed with the findings of Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
It's been properly motion and second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Walden?
No.
Ms. Schenholster?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Forward to you.
Alright then. The amendment to the land development is approved. What I, what I would like to say, I started out saying it, is that, listening to the young lady's statement that she read, and some things are shocking, I've seen some things myself, I've actually rode out and saw some things. Nobody is trying to say that the Zetas aren't a good group of young ladies. How do we exist? How do we coexist in these neighborhoods? And that's by respect, just common respect and decency for your neighbor. The noise level, the, knowing that there are some people that still live there that still have children, and they gotta raise their children, and they want their children in bed at a certain time. Mr. Griffin and I have talked at length about some things, and getting with Dr. Brooks at Georgia College, and Dr. Dorman, because the bottom line is, is this is past as it is, but we gotta find a way to coexist, we gotta find a way to make sure that the people that live in the historic district are being heard, to the point that, I heard a lot tonight, I heard a lot, and, and over my little short time of two and a half years, I'm learning a lot. So what I wanna say is that, to those that are staying here and that you're standing your ground, we do appreciate you coming to stand your ground. I do, most certainly. It's not my vote. Had it been my vote tonight, I'm not gonna tell you, it would've went in another way. I really wouldn't say it would've, you probably wouldn't have been excited, happy with me tonight. But then, this is council, so council have the right to make the decision that they choose to make. So as it stands, that is approved, that concludes the...
Mayor, before you conclude, I agree with you that this has been no means of reflection on the sorority itself, 'cause just like Dr. Lee, I too am a member of a sorority in our place right there at Georgia College. The thing about it is that somehow, I'm hoping that the, the, the person that works with the sorority there will, will listen, and listen compassionately to the things that the people that are living in the neighborhood have said about what is taking place and how, and how they feel about it. And I would hope that you would take that back to your sorority and discuss some things that you all can do different, and how you all can start serving to be better neighbors if, you know, and I'm not saying that this is part of what you do, but even if it's not what you do, then, then, then they are aware of the other people that surround them in the community, and, and, and if you all would go back and, and be the example, and set the example, and be the leader, and, and make, and helping to do things in the community, and take up the community as being your own, and work with the, the people that live there to try to make, make their lives a little bit more comfortable as well as your own. Thank you.
So at this time, I will move to new business and ask the clerk to read Resolution R-2007-29 by caption.
A resolution to authorize an engineering services agreement with Simonton Engineers to conduct a comprehensive drainage evaluation and analysis, and to provide recommendations for improvements as it relates to stormwater in Carrington Wood subdivision.
You have heard the resolution, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the proposed resolution? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee? Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Alright, the resolution is approved. This concludes the items on the agenda, but we find that we need to, once again, extend our ability to hold teleconference meetings for an additional 60 days. We hope, two months ago, when we last extended the teleconference meetings, that everything would be back to normal by now. However, we know that it is not the case. With the resurgence of the COVID virus throughout the country and within our community, we need to continue to adapt and extend teleconference meetings, hopefully this one last time. We also have found that we need to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter. Being neither of these items were needed at the time the agenda was being put together two weeks ago, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R-2007-30, extending teleconference meetings, and also to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter. Can I get a motion on that, please?
So, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Alright, the agenda is amended, and I will ask, I will ask the clerk to read R-2007-30 by caption, did I just read that? I'm lost.
A resolution extending the terms and provisions of Resolution R2003-15, authorizing the mayor and alderman of the city of Millisville to conduct all regular and call meetings via teleconference and/or video conference for an additional 60-day period in accordance with requirements of OCGA Section 50-14-1G and for other purposes.
You have heard the resolution, is there any discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Finally, do I hear a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter?
Motion to go into closed session to, for the legal matter.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Mrs. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, at this particular time, we are going into closed session, I will ask everybody to please leave the room. Come out of closed session and go back into open session pending a legal, legal matter? Is there a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Say it again.
Here.
He's saying "I." I'm looking at a loop, she's saying "I."
Is that a "here"?
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Alright, so is there any other business to discuss?
Watch for supper.
He missed the menu. So no other business to, to discuss, this concludes the business of this meeting, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned.